Communication technology is common digital services range from filing taxes to renewing driver's license to applying for a pet license. Okay, I think that as you see today's generation that are more computer savvy, there's this expectation that everything's going to be done online. Okay, essentially digital government or e-government means no more trips to physical locations to transact business with government. Everything is online via computer software, hardware, network, IT services. Getting there is referred to digital transformation and government transformation. That's really kind of in a nutshell how you define digital government. Okay, so then two more questions to answer. One is why would Osage County or any other government be interested in something like this? Okay, for the first time in history of the United States, the consensus of 2020 recorded an overall decline in rural population. While rural population decline is not new, historically those declines have been isolated versus widespread. And systemic decline shown in the 2020 census, which is a sharp contrast to the 2010 census. So rural population decline of this nature is expected to continue to grow according to many studies and patterns of population. I think Osage County their populations declined small by small percentage. Okay, but I think the thing about that and other counties like Osage County is that they're looking at. That's gonna, that trend's gonna continue. Okay, so what we're proposing here is really a long-term strategy for local government to mitigate the risk of population decline, including loss of tax revenues, loss of healthcare and the risk of losing IT workers. I mean, you're gonna have, you have a situation in local government that it's hard to retain IT staff because the demand for that staff is high. They can work in government for a few years and then they can move on to something else. They really don't have a career path and an IT worker would really not have a career path in local government because that's just really not what local government does. They use technology, but they're not in the technology business. Okay, and as I said earlier, in addition, society is becoming more populated with a generation of adults raised on technology and come to expect this online access. Okay, so really what we're proposing here is a 20-year planning horizon that considers new trends of rural community population decline. As local government tax revenues decline over time, the consortium, the nonprofit we could put together will mature and evolve to reduce the cost of government, create revenue stream as a loss of tax revenue offset. As rural school districts spend more and more on non-local state federal tax dollars to survive and ensure equal funding for all schools per the Kansas Supreme Court mandate, this consortium would reduce the amount of taxes required for metro areas in the state to support them when revenue flow decreases. So I live in Johnson County, I pay property taxes, those property taxes go to the state as it does for everyone, but those get distributed and what you're seeing in trends is much more of a, more of our taxes are going to rural communities. So that's an unsustainable model. Okay, so finally, my last, my last answer to potential questions would basically be, why start with Osage County, you know, why am I here talking to you today? And assuming that there would be an interest for a continued discussion, what would be the next steps? Okay, okay, so Osage County fits the profile, I think, in terms of location. I commented on my family's history with Osage County. Hundred and ten mile creek that's underwater today used to be farmland that was owned by our family. That was my wife's family. On the other end, the dam where the dam is today, that was basically farmland, my family farm. Okay, so familiar with the area, love the area, would move here if I could find out a way to make a living. Okay, so the role would be, what I would be asking is that we work together to form a committee that tries to get about five counties together, five years surrounding counties, and just have a more detailed discussion on the concept. And if we, through that exploratory committee, if there's interest, combined with getting feedback on how to shape what this would look like. Once we had some momentum, then I think you go to Topeka and you meet with David Tolan, who I believe is the lieutenant governor now and is from Allen County, which is one of the 15 states or 15 counties. And we, we try to get support to continue those discussions at the state level. Okay, so really this is a very, this is kind of a first step, believe it or not, this morning to what might be a 20-year journey to a, a new way of delivering services for local governments using digital technology, which really is, it's imminent. That's direction that local government and school districts are going to. And I would close by saying in my career, I've worked in large corporations and with large public sector accounts. And what you find is like if you're General Electric and you own five businesses and they all operate and do different things like aircraft engines for GE and one company builds aircraft engines, another might be doing lighting. Those are very different businesses, so it's hard to develop a common platform for just one. But if you look at school districts, school district to school district, what they really do is pretty much the same thing. Okay, what counties do in terms of administration and delivering services are pretty much the same thing. City to city, same thing. So the point being is there would not be a lot of differentiation in the platform that you would build because it's all highly configurable. It would be one platform, which is just this combination of hardware, software, services. And you would reduce your costs, but you would all be operating off of one platform, but it could still be personalized to however you run your county or your city or your school district. And then what that then does is it lowers your costs, but at the same time is giving you the technology you need to deliver services in the future. So I'm just here to present that this morning and I can share a copy of what I have here if that would be of interest.
Yeah.
And you can preview it. I can send you some additional information on government, on digital government, some high-impact things that you could read. And then also I can send you some information on shared IT services, what local governments are doing with shared IT services and how digital government, shared IT services kind of come together. And then in my correspondence, I could say a little more firmly and more structured, over the next like 90 days, these would be the things we would be looking at doing and what your role would be.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
It's, it's kind of a, the interesting thing about it, it's not like, I'm trying to say this is something you have to do in the next 90 days. This is really looking out into the future and how do you put a group of counties together and kind of, and make sure we have their feedback, your feedback, and we're shaping a digital government that meets your requirements, school districts, cities and counties.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Well, I appreciate you bringing it. You have some questions for it, Jay? So I just like, I look forward to seeing that other information.
Yeah, I think the interesting thing is you, there's a little, not to use a cliche, but a little out of the box thinking.
Yeah.
It's kind of the mindset. So anyway, that was all I had to present today. Thank you very much for putting me on the agenda. I appreciate it.
Okay.
And have a great day.
You too. Do you want to leave a copy of that with Julie?
I'll leave this copy.
Very good, thank you. Fire District number four. Come on up. Front seven.
Hot seat.
Hot seat.
I'm Jagger Shorshur with the Osage Fire District number four. We're looking at doing a building project and we retained Pat Wass as our attorney to do our lease agreements and stuff like that. And it was brought to our attention that basically we need, if we need copies of or have you guys provide a new resolution that appoints specific board members saying that we have the authority to spend the money that gets allocated to us each year? Because there's nothing, we can't find anything on record. Right, so basically it's similar to what you guys did with Quinamo, the way I understood it. So basically I'm here to ask that, do you guys, if you know where one is, provide that to us or just make a motion and adopt a new one and go that route or ever. I don't understand how, how it all works, but the attorney said so.
Right. Pat might have been the one that drew that one up.
For Quinamo?
If he wasn't, then it was Josh and we'll just have to go over and find out.
Yeah.
Okay. So you want, you want, you want one of them to write it up then?
Yeah, they're gonna have to anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what do we need to do? Just bring that to you at the next meeting or they'll provide it to you or just have Pat get ahold of you and have him write it or?
If Pat wants to write it and then send it to our council for review.
Okay.
Propose that and then that can be brought to the next meeting for approval.
Okay.
You're talking about just a second board?
Um, basically.
Because like Quinamo, they didn't have anybody that was ever appointed at the board, so that was all.
Well, see, and in our, we have board members already, but the problem is we can't find any record. Pat said we need to have something in writing that says that at one point in time that the county commission appointed us. And if there's not anything in the record, then I guess it needs to happen now because basically according to the Kansas law, we don't have the authority to spend money that's delegated to the fire district if, because basically it should, anything that goes through the fire district should be going through you guys unless you guys delegate the board.
Right.
And I didn't, we, we weren't aware of that and, but Pat brought it up to us when we.
If it does exist, it'd be in the clerk's office, I guess.
And she apparently couldn't find it.
Somebody in the audience that she probably knows a little more about this. Quinn Tyson, what, on those, what he's talking about, is it just a resolution that we can warn the members?
No, I think that's not the one that we found, there's a word on there for fire district probably.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of anything through our fire district.
Really?
That, I mean, we'd be really playing both.
Yeah, so apparently.
So if I were to give Josh and Pat and see who did the last one.
Okay.
Just make sure we have something.
And, and Pat don't know how to get ahold of Josh? Okay. We'll all have them get something written up and get it to you and then you guys can rubber stamp it or deny it or whatever. Then add more to your regions.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Let's see, it's 12 o'clock. Mark Robertson. Lead Devo issue.
Well.
Need Missy up here too?
Huh?
You need to be up here as well, it's your office.
Will I be out there? I'll let it drop.
Well, I brought my directory and give you a little insight that I spent retired 22 years in the law enforcement field for the state of Kansas. So I retired as a captain. My wife and I bought a little hobby farm in the Carbondale address. And our house was built in 1875, so we tried to take care of it and keep it, you know, up to date and all this other stuff. The problem we have and kind of going back, I came from Topeka and I had to collect over 2,000 signatures to start in the NIA, which is the Neighborhood Improvement Association. So getting involved in code compliance, law enforcement, rundown houses and doing everything that we can with logging things down when the police respond to a place like a drug house and getting it shut down to where it was at the point that it was falling apart, that we could take steps forward to get it demolished and removed. So it kind of led to, you know, the houses not getting their, their value out of it by having all this junk in the yards and stuff like that. So basically that's why I'm here. I've been out there for 18 years and many moons back, Whitmer Farm Realty used to sell these little three acre plots, $49.99 and you could have a place to put a house on or whatever. Most of them didn't even have water, so that's my problem with what I'm trying to bring here today. And I'm gonna do a bunch of checking and codes and stuff like that, so this won't be my last time here. And it's not the point that I'm making a complaint because I asked if there was code compliance. And everybody's like, I couldn't get anything, you know? So more focused on the drug houses. One of the houses in question, 14 years ago, they killed a guy. And I was still in the law enforcement. And what had happened was they decapitated it and cut him up and buried him on the property. Well, they had 15 pit holes, they dug it up. So they had to make up something because they had all these body parts laying everywhere. So the woman that lived there at the time said she kicked what she thought was a toadstool, but was a human skull. So they made up this whole story. That's one of the properties I have a problem with. On the Scranton directory, plat eight, it shows what houses are there, but there is three other trailers that are not even there. So how did they, and this is the new directory. So how did them places get put on or moved in there without having to? So one of them was Donna Haake and I think the name is under Chuck Haake. That's 118, 19 Wanamaker. That place eventually burnt down and they were after a guy here not too long ago and I guess they spent time in jail, they finally caught him. But it's just a total trash. The trailer's gone, there's all kinds of junk there. The next one is Jeff Harris, which doesn't show on, on the plat at all. His trailer caught on fire and it was a big meth house. So the trailer caught on fire. Now he's got a big RV with the front windshield knocked out and a hose leading into the trailer and an extension cord to get electricity to live in this thing. It's not habitable. And I'll bring pictures next time. I had them on my cell phone there up in the car, but there's so much junk there. It looked, it's unbelievable. The house in between there that's not listed, they have it up for sale and they want $149,000. They will never sell that house, which is too, you know, which it's, it's beyond. So that's what I'm trying to, to find out and do some investigation on code compliance. Is there anything that can be done? What can we do to start the action? And I'll say this, I'm, I'm gonna be an eyesore. I'll be here every Monday at the, and bring and presenting stuff if I have to. I'm gonna do a lot of research. I'm totally retired now, so it's no big deal for me. Like I said, the NIA, I door to door in Topeka to collect 2,000 signatures to start our own NIA. And that was by the governors, the old, the original governor's mansion on Eighth Street. So with, with, with all the crap and everybody says there's nothing you can do, well, there's gotta be a start. So the property value goes down, the county loses money because the property goes down. And you want to bring in, you know, good, good housing or people in and the ones that take care of the property don't get any benefits because of these trash dumps. So that's what I'm trying to find out, what I wanted, how to go about it in code compliance. There's gotta be something.
I met with the Sheriff's Department on Friday, he called me on Friday. I met with the Sheriff's Department on Friday and I'm, I don't feel safe going out there alone. And so they're gonna drone those two properties for me, so I have photos and documentation. And then I can send a letter, but what year is that book from? Because it's not current.
Today? Does it, does it show the, I got a ton of them.
2020. I don't show that the landowners currently live on this property. They, their address on those parcels are not at that location. So I can send a letter, you know, wait 30 days, the landowner's gonna live there. So I don't know what to do.
Now this, even though this is twenty, them, them houses has been there, or the trailers.
Right, but the landowners don't live there anymore.
So I have been talking with those folks that I talked to you about, about code compliance and what to do, these guys to help us out, so um, I'm trying to get them to write up an agreement that they would be uh, acceptable to and that we would be acceptable to.
Sure.
So maybe this would help push them forward.
Yeah, I mean, like I, I mean, I hated to inform him that, but I can't, I have the same issue where I live and I can't help myself any more than I can.
Cause there are, and there are steps, and we have. We just need somebody to put that whole process together and forward to that.
Well, and to be honest, it's a full-time job in itself.
Yes.
It's not just where you.
I understand that and I, we kinda got off on a a, a bad step at first, but then come back, you know, cause you know, you get frustrated.
Yeah.
And like I said, yes, there's a lot of, you know, uh, false stuff, you know, like basically when we used to say, well, we live in Carbondale, everybody, oh, you draw our welfare, you know, the old thumbage that, you know, Carbondale was one of the, oh, you, you're, you're kind of lower leveled uh, residents, so.
But in reference to you like going door to door, like that's why people live in the county is because they don't wanna be part of an HOA or something and, I mean, so you kind of have to respect what they do on their property. I, don't get me wrong, I one hundred percent in, agree with your concern. I have the same issue where I live. But that's why people live in the county and that's just my thing.
Well, there's, there's, there's a part that I understand you build up stuff, there's two other properties that I can talk about on on Hundred Twenty-Fifth the same way. There's a trailer there.
I can give you a list of about two hundred more.
And but the part about it is, is, you know, you got fifteen cars that don't run, they're all piled up. This one on Harris, Jeff Harris, uh, criminal, um, for doing meth. You've got, just to the left of it, you got a hot tub that's all tore apart, you got a jet ski that's all tore apart, there's all kinds of junk, it just piled, it's right on the road. You know? The house is not habitable. I don't, I don't, how that person can be in code compliance because you can't live there. The whole trailer's burnt, the whole forest out, now he's got this big huge Winnebago in there, you know? I've had them come to my house, knock on the door for something and just to see if I'm home. You know, and that's the way they do it, they come knock, if you're not answered, then they come in. So to me, you're talking about meth houses. Whoever the owner is, is in there and if a meth house is busted, there's the, the sheriff goes there three or four times, Topeka, s- it's the same statutes, Kansas statutes. If it's deemed a problematic place, it gets shut down, it gets boarded up. And, and whoever the owner is, is responsible for compliance to build it back up or it gets, if there's nothing done and they blow it off, it gets demolished. That's gonna help the county. You know, when you got people that pay high taxes, you know, they, that house, hundred forty thousand dollar house is not gonna be sold. So who's, who's, who's uh, not gonna benefit? The county, you know, for taxes, they're not gonna be, you know, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, there's gotta be something other than, well, nobody's ever tackled it, I'm sure. And me going door to door, that's, that's how it was in the city for an NIA, I'm not trying to do an NIA.
No, I get it.
You know, because, you know, HUD funding, there's special monies that you can draw, you can send, you can clean up grass, everything, you know, the grass gets this high, it's, it's out of code compliance. You know, and by the NIA, they have people come and help, boom, we'll come over and help, cause they can't afford it. So we get a group together once a month. We're gonna go mow, like Donna Hake was seventy-eight years old. And uh, we go mow their lawns to help them, so that, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at is trying to rejuvenate, rejuvenate the the ice source or getting somebody to do something about it other than, well, we don't do nothing, you know? If you, if you, you can't do anything by not tackling it, and that's my, my, I'll, I'll be there. I'm not, this is not gonna be, oh, it's just me, this is for everyone. You know, people have stuff, it's a little scattered, but this is a total, it looks like a junkyard.
Well, it sounds to me like part of the process is already started, that the sheriff's gonna get some pictures and things like that, then we'll just go from there.
He said he would try to get to it this week, I mean, you have to give him grace too, these criminal things are way more important right now, but um, he said he would try to get there either Friday, I went to him Friday morning after I spoke to him and um, he said if you can get it Friday, it would be this week.
Right, I understand that part too, you know, cause.
Well, that's, you have to start anyway, cause even still, uh, it, it's a process, you know, you gotta send the letters, you gotta send notifications, you gotta public carries.
Well, I'm gonna do some investigation and trying to get statutes and those photos and bring them if they're not, you know, I mean, it's, you could put a drone up there and take a picture from the, you know? But it's better when I can bring it, says here's this, here's this, here's this, this is what it looks like. Would you live there? If he was selling your house, how could you sell your house with this total mess?
I mean, like Missy said before, you know, we each have our own rights to certain property and certain stuff like that, but there is a fine line. And when they're completely dilapidated and destroyed, there's drug activity and things like that happening, then I believe we have a process.
Well, that's, and, and like I said, the Donna Hake, who's a hate guy, they had IRS come in and put a freeze on everything and they was selling the stuff illegally, so the sheriff shows up and Donna Hake's in the kitchen making meth. So she serves at seventy-eight years old, serves two years in, in uh, the state prison for making meth to try to make an ends meet, you know, so.
Yeah. Right.
And she's died and now the trailer's totally burned up and gone and there's just.
So the people live in their squatters or are they?
Yes.
Relation of their squatters?
Squatters are hard sometimes.
I know, there is, that is a very touchy subject. Yeah, it's weird.
Well, it's like I said, the fifteen pit bulls running, you know, attacking our livestock and stuff like that. And that's been a long time ago.
The dogs are still out there?
Oh, no. I'll plead the fifth, but they are no longer alive.
Got you, got you.
You know what I mean, so?
They've disappeared.
So, yeah, yeah, and they were very deep. So, but you know, they're attacking people. And my canine took one of them out, and after that, I was like, I'm not gonna put up with this, cause if my grandkids come out and they're gonna get attacked by this, and they used fifteen pit bulls to guard the meth house.
So the owners of the property are deceased?
The Hake is, well, it shows, it shows.
By the way, I'm knowing that, I just know that the landowner's address is not at that location.
Right. It shows the property owner is Chuck Hake, but there's nothing on Jeff Harris. Uh, and then there's a uh, uh, Michael Cole that lives in a trailer down below, it shows a road on that uh, section that goes down there, there's a trailer there, it's unhabitable, and they make their meth down there. So so anyway, I'm, I hated to bring your time up without a whole lot of stuff, but this ain't gonna be ending. I'll be here again.
Yeah.
And I'll have more, so I wanna listen, you know what I mean, I'm not, I'm not a one-time complaint person. So.
That's good to hear. Uh, there is a process though, I think we'll start there, get pictures and stuff like that.
Well, thank you for letting me talk and uh, I appreciate it.
No problem. Considerably early yet. Get up to that till ten. Well, we can't do the bridge landing until ten. The law setter foundation package, we could get, they won't be here till eleven. Huh? Yeah, that's people seeing there. Yeah, what are you guys up to? We didn't hit it on our list. Did not.
Nobody called and talked to me, I read every meeting and whatever it said, I push ahead, so.
It was set at a previous meeting.
Yeah, I, I, no one talks to me around, I'm doing stuff like that, so I try to pull it ahead, get people to call me and check or ask.
Right, it was published in the paper, really.
Did it say what problems out there?
Nine o'clock.
That would be rated, you'd be able to post them.
Well, we posted, we, we posted.
It was on the commissioner meeting.
Posted it in the papers at the meeting, yeah.
I don't post anything in the papers, so let's see that.
Somebody did, so whoever did it, them. How about we just go ahead and go into a public hearing, a little second here? With, refresh my memory, give the address. The location.
We're, we're in the process of, of trying to close the crossing and uh, make alternate road at uh, three hundred and fif- seventeenth and, and Morrell.
Seventeenth and Borrell.
Yeah.
Okay, we will open a public hearing to close crossing and make a alternate route over the railroad tracks at Seventeenth and Borrell.
Yeah, and the, the idea of it is, I've got an agreement with uh, the, the railroad. Uh, talked to them this morning, I think I presented that here a while back to you.
Yeah.
And we needed the verification on getting the, the public hearing at the, so we could go process of closing that crossing once the uh, the road was made and I talked to them actually this morning and, and they are ready to sign that agreement once we have this verification done.
Yeah.
And uh, it's just a matter of us saying go, or then they'll send me the papers and, and we can get that signed. I've also uh, received uh, from, from Delbert from McDot, uh, asking if, if uh, you could give me a resol- or have a resolution made so I could sign off on them, so that they've got paperwork that needs to be done for their donation on their side, so they can go forward. And they will go forward as soon as the, the railroad agreement is signed, which is, which in that agreement, they needed okay that that crossing is gonna be closed. And uh, so that's where we're at. I think we've got two adjacent landowners here that uh, as far as I know are still in agreement that that crossing should be closed for safety reasons for everybody in, in the area. Uh, because of the angle that that railroad is, isn't adjacent with the road, you have to look over your shoulder so much and there's nothing there to uh, warn you of the train coming. And uh, so they're all in agreement for us, I understand, of, of making another road that parallels through the railroad going up to Morrell and using which it's always got crossbars on. And uh, so that's, that's just where we're at and I, 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 I believe the way I understood it through the conversations in the past, that we need to have this public hearing, we just can't put in a road anywhere. And uh, and that's what the purpose of this all is, yeah.
And I was thinking that Josh was drawing up the resolution, did he, did he send out anybody anything on that?
I thought he was working on it.
He is working on it, but I have not seen the resolution.
Okay.
And you folks are, do you have anything you'd like to speak of, you're in favor of this?
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'll speak maybe for uh, Mr. Creedy also, but uh, one of our biggest concerns is, is that if we close the crossing, if, if it shows up on paperwork, it's closed, it's crossing, will the railroad come in and remove the crossing before the roadway and the new roadway gets built? And, and I think when you come and have an agreement set down, and I, I hope that that kind of stays in somewhere when there will be this resolution.
That was supposed to be an agreement though.
The new roadway is officially open.
Yeah, the, the way the agreement is with the, with the railroad at this point, the way the agreement is, is is we have two years to get the, to get the adjacent road built prior to that crossing being closed. But it's like the railroad in this agreement, they wanna make sure the county that's gonna follow up on their end of closing that, we're gonna close that, so it's, it's coming to here.
Which is why I kept a little more when you did the resolution, because I was basically closing the road in the future. Or closing the crossing in the future.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Once the road's built and constructed, then the crossing closes.
Then the crossing.
And before it closes, we have to assign a name at our office before they close it.
And I'm one.
The way I understood it, they're not even gonna send out a um, equipment to do it, we'll probably use our track code to dig that out, please, once other roads are built, so.
And then like the nine one four here has to be a whole, all of that too, for hours in the future?
Yeah, this just starts that process.
Yes.
Either way, that works, and then the contractor will be there to make the adjacent road. Once that road is being built for them, that dish line can be cut at, at, at that time.
Yeah.
So once the once the road is built around, then they can come in, that their crossing is out of the tracks and things at, at any time, but I, but anyway, that, that is the main issue, is we want to make sure that road is built before the crossing is and, and Glenn is right there. We don't want something here, said here that that's gonna be closed and then they come in and pull up their deals and
Right.
create that, just uh, we, we, we have to have the road built before the crossing, it's, it's just way too much inconvenient for everybody around there.
Right.
So.
So, we don't even have a resolution today, but we've held a public hearing now. And uh, as long as there's no one in this agreement, uh, if everybody's issues have been answered, if everybody's, I mean, does that work for you guys as well, but? Cause yeah, I do remember when we started talking about this, we made sure to put that in part of the agreement, the road would be completed before the crossing was.
That's right.
And, and that. And then uh, we were actually shutting down, um, is it Seventeenth? We were actually just shutting the crossing down, so they'll still have access.
That's right, my. Glenn, Glenn needs access to a gate on the other side. So that, that road has to be open of some sort.
Right.
To give him access to this property.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so then we will just need to, uh, we don't have a resolution, a resolution to approve.
Resolution here, but we could make the motion to.
Yeah.
A resolution once it's drawn up by Josh. With all the legal descriptions, says everybody needed in there. And actually we have Josh and I have a Caleb in on, let's see, I have a Josh's hand, cause Caleb's uh, worked with the state or something, so.
So in that resolution, is it same or does it need to be a different resolution? K dot asked so that I, so I could be the one to sign off on those agreements.
We'll have to point you to sign E.
Yeah. Okay.
To sign, what do you need to sign?
Well, K dot's gonna have several agreements of, of paperwork of some sort, I haven't seen any of them yet, but.
But that would be between you and your township, right? Not between the county, the county, all of them is the part they do. I don't know if we can have somebody to sign, to sign as a county representative, if it's not an employee of the county, is that? How, how would that work? You've been involved with these before? Maybe not to this level, but that'd be a run, I mean uh, returning question again.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I think. Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I think, I think it got passed on to you and, and Caleb, the, KDOT wanting a resolution for me, so I could sign off on those things. I mean, at the end of the day.
The resolution, you need, we're setting more agreements and then you can sign for your county. You're not signing for the county, you're signing for the council.
Well, whoever, but it's, at the end of the day, I mean, we had this discussion as well. At the end of the day, the county is the one that lying this road be putting in, it's not the township. And, and I don't know who, how that's directed, but the, but the email from the KDOT was to ask for a resolution that I can sign off on that. You know, I'm the trustee of all the township, I'd be able to sign off on that. But at the end of the day, you had guys who are the ones that have control for the roads ago.
Right.
And that's why he's asking me, I believe, that I can sign off on those agreements to have the road built.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Well, and all those agreements can be forwarded to us as well, when you get them sent to us, that way we can review them. We could go from there, because first step, we gotta get them back, get the resolution in front of us for review.
Yep.
So.
You still got Josh's email and stuff, do you not?
I, I believe I do now. I, I didn't till lately, but I did.
You might ask him what you just asked us about, the resolution that KDOT wants for your signings. I don't, I, there's gonna be some legal questions there.
And I believe that, that email was actually forwarded to Josh.
So email already happened, huh?
Yeah.
Good.
And, 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 and you read it as well as I did. It didn't, it only just asked for a resolution that I can sign.
Yeah.
So, so maybe we need.
Apologize for the mix-up for sure, but, uh, it sounds to me like the folks that did come that wanted the speaker in agreeance with the, so we could start moving forward. We'll just motion to adjourn the public hearing. Motion's been made, seconded all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. So then, uh, send that, any questions to Josh? And then that way we'll get with him also, remind him, bring the resolution next week, and then we can get the resolution signed.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep, and you asked the last time I was in, I hope you maybe got it already, but, but for the email for the KDOT.
Yep, yep, they forwarded it on to me. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the mix-up. Ooh. Busy morning to have the cold. Uh. We can look over this request for project exemption certificate. Are you familiar with this? It's a document that we have to file, sign, authorize it.
Yep, the tax.
We'll just need information for we can fill that out and sign it.
I'm gonna pass that motion.
Call second the motion. Motion's been made, seconded all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll get that filled out today, Julie.
Okay, I think like when we're done, you have, they have to do that finished project letter I saw. So I don't know if we like dated or like open. You're gonna put on there, and then when they're finished, would your letter work anymore? They have to, I, I'm not sure if they do that, where they send us a final, to then just to close that. So I can do that with some instructions.
Yeah, okay. Let's go ahead and review the minutes. We'll take some time to review and approve the minutes, and then we may go to recess for a little bit.
Yeah, we could do that. You want to read these minutes real quick at this hour, right?
Anyone touch them out to me?
Yeah. She didn't give it to me. That's good. These are good, these are good.
Yes, fine. Thank you.
Okay, is it? All right. Is it Stockers?
Yeah, it's five of those.
Think only had one. Think only had one. Oh, it is Stockers, yeah.
Right, I see the motion to approve the April seventeenth, twenty-three minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Get your signature on that. You guys made it just in time. Going up.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you doing?
Very good.
Thanks for making time for us today.
You guys had a good meeting so far today?
Had a quick one.
Has it?
It's good, it's good. We needed one, huh?
Good.
Change, aren't you?
What's that?
We got change.
No, it's gonna be good, it's all good.
Nice and clean.
Yeah.
Come out.
Yeah.
Good.
So I'll start off by saying hi. My name is Penny Pollard. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm the account manager for Aetna. And so what I do for you guys is I oversee the overall running plan. As escalated issues, when you come through, they come up to me. And then, of course, I work through with Greg, um, at renewal time to work with our underwriters and work with Greg and get us where we need to be.
Cool.
Perfect. Um, so at our last meeting, um, we had agreed to renew with Aetna um, with the five percent off your renewal, um, option that we had showed you. So today we have, um, with us the official rates and renewal documents that would need to be s- signed to confirm that renewal. Um, before we get started into the presentation, um, just wanted to provide some background. So as a reminder, when we wrote your plan with Aetna, um, the objective was to match your deductibles and your plan designs that you had with the Kansas State plan. Um, so say the nine hundred dollar deductible and the twenty-seven fifty dollar, uh, twenty-seven and, gosh, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan. Um, and so we did that. Um, over the last couple of weeks, we've determined that, um, your plan, um, deductibles on the high deductible health plan were set up with an aggregate deductible versus an embedded deductible, um, like you had with the state plan. The reason that Aetna did that is that, um, the federal guidelines do not allow a, um, embedded deductible on a twenty-seven fifty, um, plan. Um, based on federal guidelines, you have to have an aggregate deductible with that plan design. Um, so we worked with Aetna to essentially determine what that means and the impact of that. Um, so what an aggregate deductible means is that those that have a, above an employee-only coverage, so employee spouse, employee child, or family coverage, um, they have to meet a family deductible. Um, there's not an individual deductible that is met first before the plan pays. Um, so we determined that with your plan being set as an, um, aggregate, that if the plan was set as embedded, there would be five individuals in twenty-twenty-two, um, that could have gotten money back. Um, and two in twenty-twenty-three that could get money back based on meeting the individual deductible, um, rather than the family deductible. And why we bring that up to you today is that we do have both options, um, to show you, um, for your renewal. Um, one with an embedded deductible, one with an aggregate deductible. Um, and working with Aetna, we've, um, gotten them to agree to offer retroactively back to July first, if that's of interest, um, to move your deductible, um, to what would be required per federal guidelines to that twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible and reprocess claims for those individuals that were impacted um, by having that family deductible requirement in place. Um, so the next page, page three, um, does walk through those two options. Um, the good news is, is that Aetna's agreed to keep your rates very similar regardless of which route that you decide to take with your deductible. Um, the option one shows what you have in place today, um, with an aggregate deductible. Option two, um, on the far right-hand side shows what you would have rate-wise, um, if you moved to the, um, embedded deductible, which again, more closely matches what you have had with the Kansas State plan. So overall, the increase remains, um, the same, um, but the rate differential is just a little bit different, uh, based on rounding. Now, I know that's a lot of information, so before we go on further, what, what questions can we help answer for you all?
So the one we have now is twenty-seven fifty, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what you had before with the state plan.
And then we go to the three thousand, it changes what? I mean, I'm trying to figure this out when I look at the writing, it looks like it changes the, the embedded, uh, what, what's the difference between the embedded and the non-embedded? So quite that much, I'm trying to think of what it is.
Yeah, so page four, if you wanna turn there, we did walk, and we don't have to walk through this, um, line by line, but did wanna provide some examples of how that works, how they're different. So what you have today is an aggregate deductible. So what that means is that for anyone that has family coverage or above individual, um, coverage, there's not an individual deductible that applies. Um, all members of the family share a family deductible that must be met before Aetna or the plan pays, um, towards claims. Um, so there's a couple of examples that show that either the employee can meet all of the family deductible on their own or, um, some of the claims can be accumulated by the dependents as well to get to that full family deductible. With the embedded deductible, there is an individual deductible that applies to each family member. So say the employee gets to three thousand dollars in services, and that individual deductible has been met for that one person, and then the p- plan will pay for that one person. Um. Does that help explain that a little bit?
I think so, it was, if I, if I understand it, then, then I'll use myself as an example. If I go out and I, uh, stuff down, I need five thousand dollars in deductible, then my kids don't pay anything. There's no deductible for that. That's in the aggregate.
That's on the aggregate.
And the embedded one, if I did the same scenario, I'm not gonna have to spend five thousand dollars, I'm gonna spend three thousand.
For yourself.
Because I'm paying my deductible.
For yourself.
Then it stops.
For you, but the kiddos would still have their own.
Right, but, because most times it's not the kids who are getting the deductible, it's gonna be the law.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm using myself as, last year was a good example, because I'm sure that if I would have been a second one, I would have saved a whole bunch of money.
Yeah, and if you flip over to the next page, it'll give you a really good example of hard, you know, hands-on which people were impacted by that. And I think you can, I mean, what, what we wanted to look at is, well, let's determine the number of people that were impacted as a result, negatively as a result of the aggregate deductible. And then that would enable you guys to better make a decision as to which way we ought to go, uh, moving forward. And when, when you look at, we've got five people, uh, for two thousand twenty-two, that, that are owed money back. One is twenty-three hundred, one's four eighty-four, one's twenty-seven hundred, fourteen ninety-six, and fifteen fifty-two. Well, what happened is, I can't really blame Aetna because the twenty-seven fifty was what they issued. Well, what happened was that was not able to be an embedded deductible per federal guidelines. But that being said, we did offer up that and to say, hey, match the benefits that they have right now with the plan. But we didn't realize that it was set up aggregate until we started looking at this. A- as a result of that, Aetna has come back and said, we will agree to retroactively make the change to make it right, which is the right thing to do. So, um, they're gonna retroactively make it right, if, in fact, that's what you guys wanna do, if you wanna go. What's that?
To keep it on the back, to that one.
No, keep it, move it to, move it to embedded, yeah. So that way, all these people, and frankly, we, we haven't had any people bring it up. I, I, I don't think they knew any better of it, that, but, but.
I didn't know any better, I just knew because I had two documents.
Right. Yeah, so it would be retroactive to twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible for Janu- for, for last year. Moving forward, the, the federal minimum deductible for embedded goes to three thousand. So it would be three thousand for embedded deductible as of July one of two thousand twenty-three.
So essentially, we don't have much choice in making the change, because you said it was a, uh, regulation.
Right.
In order to be embedded.
Right.
Yeah.
In order to be embedded, yeah.
You can, you can keep the deductible low if you don't wanna be embedded and leave it as aggregate. But that does leave the exposure to where one person in that family can meet the whole deductible by themselves. Each year, the IRS, uh, updates what that minimum deductible has to be within a family to be embedded. And so for two thousand twenty-two, they had upped it to twenty-eight hundred, so your twenty-seven fifty fell right under that.
Right.
So to fix that, we would retro-change your current plan to, onto seven-one-twenty-two, up to that twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible. But then for two thousand twenty-three, IRS is up that to three thousand.
So that there will be somewhat of a rate hike. Did I read this correctly? By jumping it up to the three thousand?
Yeah, I mean, the rates are a little bit different on the three thousand dollar deductible on the embedded. So, and they're, it's, it's kinda.
You can tell it's not as much.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at the nine hundred dollar deductible, which is kind of the plan that I think more people wanna get on anyway, it's actually lower.
Yeah.
So the nine hundred is lower than it was, and I don't know why they did that. Is, is that just due to rounding?
Yeah.
I mean, if they wanted to buy it at the same rate, would it be a big deal to, to authorize it that way?
I mean, as the option one rates?
Yeah, I mean, because the bottom line is, it's, it's like within, on an annual basis.
It's ten or fifteen cents, a little hard some.
It's thirty-seven dollars on annual, on an annualized basis.
Yeah, okay, so it's not drastic.
It's thirty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the way to get some of these folks some of that money they're gonna back.
Get the money back, yeah.
Well, and those impacted members, if we retro-change the twenty-seven fifty plan back to seven-one-twenty-two, we'll reprocess their claims.
Right.
To help them get their, their money back.
Right.
Or if you want to, you can just keep it the way it is, you keep the twenty-seven fifty. But I think giving the money back for those employees, I think that would be my recommendation.
Well, if you're talking about a very slight change in order to recoup this cost, if they think it's right.
I think it's all right.
Yeah.
And it gets us where we're all in tune, we're big on, uh, starting to cover the standard route.
Yeah. So we just need a motion to approve that, that change?
Yeah, the problem to the, uh, embedded, I was over the.
I think you just did, I'll second it. Motion's been made, seconded all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. That motion was to change to the embedded rate plan? To allow markets to change us?
Now, I make the motion about having the chairman sign his documentation, maybe it's a sign.
I'll second that. Motion's been made, seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So the first, uh, copies for the medical plan and then to follow the dental. So the first copies to the medical plan and then to follow the dental and vision plans, which are in a rate guarantee, but we still have to just have signature to renew.
And these are the folks that were outlined in this document? Okay. This is probably correct.
Yes.
There's one, we're writing up the check, is it?
It's good.
I don't have a lot of things coming to that.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
I guess, well, I might have to go over the notes, because some of them are not good for the competition.
Oh, yeah.
What are you guys envisioning for open enrollment support? Have you thought at all about that or need to discuss that maybe with Stephanie? Last year, we did a health fair.
Do you want to provide copies of this stuff to Julie as well, please?
Yes, yes, I can do that. It was her on that. Whatever works for you guys to get the employees together. I think last year, it wasn't mandatory for the employees to attend the health fair, so we could talk through that, since the plans will remain with Aetna, if it's of value for us to have something where all the employees come, or if it's just come with questions. Okay.
Yeah, give her step in. Give her some dates and whatever, whatever works best.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good day as well. You too.
Well, I need two minutes to blow that out. It'll take a second.
Hey, Raj, how, your bids are up till 10:00. How long do we need the second session? How long is the second session? So I brought my master in, when he comes back, we'll go before you go.
And the council is here. Do you mind if we get a copy as well? Yes, that would be very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. Is that what you mean? Yeah, I got one. I brought it. You guys, you. Step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just. I brought it. You guys, you. Just step. Stephanie. That can be a very helpful, so that can make it a little easier. You just.
The last time the commissioners did themselves.
Yeah, we put it back, it's not ten. You're close.
Last time one of the commissioners wrote.
There's some shit that's been wired because we're still going with the, I mean, are shipping.
They don't.
Don't have to take it in exactly.
Howdy gentlemen.
Man, they've already got sheets up there.
Yes, sir.
That was almost perfect time.
Yeah. Okay, best of five.
Yes.
We'll start with our written bid opening.
Okay, and I don't have letter.
It's real or bits?
Yeah, I've got two, I guess.
One minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as he's opening it, someone is covering it.
I'll just get it right and then hand them to you. Oh, good, thank you.
This one's the one you can't cut yourself on.
That's a good thing.
You want the other one? They give you the one that's getting proof. Try that one.
Yeah, there we go.
All right, that's time, ten o'clock. No more minutes left. What are the time? You don't want to read them?
I don't, we've got to read them.
Yeah. Okay, we call this bid number one.
Thank you.
Brian Holbyer Construction.
I don't put the numbers in it, I don't need to read the numbers, we're at the bottom, last number at the very bottom.
Total project, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
Five ninety-eight, five forty?
Yes.
Again, back this way, because I'll make copies of them if you want, I can put them back in there for you, thank you.
You got the input and everything. Bid number two, Ebert. Total project, five hundred, two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents.
Was that five oh two what?
Two seventy.
Two seventy.
On the oh nine.
Yeah. And leave it out the end book for you. Bid three, Doglinger and Sons Construction Inc. Total project, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Bid number four, and final bid.
Right, King.
Nope.
Sorry, that's engineering, that's that's one. Is that yours?
Yes.
So bid number four. This is the bid as well, you said?
That's our engineering assessment, you can do it at the very end.
Yeah. This B and B Bridge Company. Bid number four. Let's figure the work score. Total project, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven oh two and ninety-three cents. Okay, bid number five. Now this is the final bid, correct?
Yes.
That's from King.
King Construction. Total project, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Okay.
Who's the one that was, was that who was it, that last time?
WCI?
Wildcat.
Living boxes, yeah.
Okay.
And then Wildcat, yeah, a little bit of everything, but they've been this year round.
The bid project estimate, cook flat strobe. Total project, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
And then we'll take these back to the office, run the numbers, and then give you the recommendation on, a little better on this. If you have a few minutes, we could kind of go over, there's a new local improvement program going with K-DOT.
You guys have a second?
If you have a second, we can go over that.
Yeah.
So the parent loves Ebert.
What's your name again?
Kenny Blair.
Kenny Blair?
I'm Lonnie Mark.
Lonnie Mark, that's all right. Well, I've worked around cook flat strobe quite a bit, but I think I dealt with it, I'm dead.
So, basically, K-DOT has their U R V program, and you, we're building, you've got, you got selected here a couple of years ago, and we're building one here, I think, well, it's getting late in July.
July, uh, July twenty-ninth, I think.
So, uh, anyway, there's a new program out, and it's based on, it's statewide, and your bridge has to be in crappy shape or it won't get picked.
Another bridge?
So we, I have listed your worst bridges from, these are the only bridges I think in your county that have a shot at getting picked, picked, and the top number is the most likely to get picked. It's got the S R means sufficiency rating, that's on a scale from zero to a hundred. And bridges are only in the twenties and thirties usually get picked, and the lower the number, the better off it is, so.
See, I don't see that bridge over Birmingham out here. Have these guys been made aware of that bridge?
It's probably has too high of a sufficiency rating, which, show me on the map here, which one you're talking about.
Let's see, right here. You have to blow it up, here's the road going out, the bridge is right in here.
So it's two thirteen then?
Two thirteen?
Yeah, two thirteen, there you go.
The, the problem is, you can submit the bridges you want, but they won't get picked.
Right.
You gotta think about the K-DOT criteria.
I'm just curious, trying to follow up with it, for years I was told that it wasn't.
Uh, submission rating is forty-six point seven, which is still, yeah, which is still below fifty. The, the basic criteria is, if it's below fifty, it, it should be considered to be replaced, and it is. The problem is, you're competing statewide, and everybody's got these terrible bridges, they're, they're in the twenties. Last year, we submitted this second one, the last one on the list.
First three ninety.
And it did not get picked, just because its sufficiency rating's in the forties, it's just got a forty-four. So, um, that's the one that's straight east of, it's in blue, straight east of Linden, yeah. And that's on the bridge replacement program. So, we've been, and why?
Yeah, the single trust, it's in the, I think that sufficiency rating is, uh, in the, still in.
Forty's, isn't it?
Right, north, right north of Melbourne.
That's just straight out, it's probably RS route, is that an RS route bridge? See, that, that's an off-system map we're looking at.
Yeah, it's that one, yeah, it's that one right, right, that's there, I believe.
Yes, uh.
Or yeah, right there, yeah, yeah.
I think it's three seventy, it's right here, it's not on that map, this is a separate map. I think it's, bridge three seven, the problem is, it just rates too high and it won't get picked.
Even though it is fracture.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's just too high of a rating to get selected. That's, that's something in it, or? No. It's above fifty.
It's in the sixties, yeah.
So it's just not gonna get picked. So, basically, the program is, if you get picked in the off-system program, the construction and construction inspection are a hundred percent on K-DOT. All you, the county has to pay is engineering, geology, right away utility, so it's a really good deal. Then the RS route program, I think that you guys are in the fifteen percent category or so, so it's not as good, but K-DOT pays eighty-five.
Eighty-five, they pay fifteen percent.
So which bridges are you gonna select?
Well, it's up to you.
Water.
You can submit more than one, uh, and you can put the order of importance, like, this is our most important, this is our second. Uh, I would suggest at least submitting one under the off-system and one under the RS route. And like I say, you really only have two bridges that are even close on the RS routes, and the one we submitted last year did not get picked, just because of the rating, you could resubmit it.
So you'd wanna go with a smaller rating, go that four seventy?
If you want to get picked, you know, it's just kind of the way it is.
It ups your ante for getting picked, and you don't have to pick today, we have four weeks, we have four weeks to do this, but.
It's due on the twenty-sixth of May. I think we got it, we had it pretty quick last year, we kind of met up, just a couple of weeks after we set up the, you know, we.
So you're looking, so we have a suggestion, suggestion.
Yeah, we need that in the office.
We can reconvene and, uh, get your recommendation.
I mean, if you want to submit a couple, we can, it's just pretty much that order is the way K-DOT picks, and so, and there's only.
No, no, that's your, that's your copy.
I need that. So, anyway.
I can get that to you, if you want.
You should have copies of the.
It should be copies on file, but I'll get you one email, PDF of it.
Anyway.
Cool.
So I highlighted, yeah, the, the two RS bridges are highlighted in blue, they're there, down there, and the off-system ones are in yellow.
Got you to tell you whether. Okay, I'm gonna go upstairs and get, uh.
They're all kind of, they're all kind of, the off-system ones are all kind of similar, size-wise and everything. But the higher up on that list you pick, the, a lot better odds of getting.
Right. They're good. All right.
I just don't know.
It just helps, helps, helps if they get that extra five minutes.
Yeah, that's a big deal, especially if it's a hundred percent.
Yes.
Project funding, that's huge. Huge. Let's see, we already approved the bid, it's the only thing we really have left. PBC, and then we have the exact personnel matters. Ryan, do you have any other updates in the county? I think it's hilarious, I seen you over there grave net. Dump road, where Thompson.
Yeah.
Let's see my body next to it.
They got some rock the other day.
It's already in there, very good. Have you guys been having any rock shortages?
No, just, just trying to keep up, just two tandems hauling rock.
Right.
You're not moving much in an eight-hour period. And we're pulling from, not with your script.
Right, right. I mean, you can't, the prices are just so different, we don't even go over there anymore.
The price, price of your day, I don't know if you shared that with you.
I usually get the.
I've got this one in the bag, and I was gonna probably give it to that, I'm gonna read that right there. That's gonna be noticed, like, there, it's not gonna be blown. Run the curtains, that, that K-DOT, so if you want, I'll let you read it now, I have the ten.
Okay.
I need to be, because I got the auction that day. I'll remind you, because it gets closer. Another fifth, because I have my dag to my appointments. Lots of, two-minute recess to blow my nose.
Yeah, recess for two minutes, so Ryan, you're good to go then?
Yeah, that takes care of things, so. Sorry, man.
You ready to go?
Yep.
All right. We don't have a clerk, we do have a clerk. Have a new clerk. Okay. Now we're ready to go back in. Okay. The last order of business we have, where did I let my jig go to? Right there. Do you approve, that's PBC. Did we have anything under, we don't have a staff report, turn us down here, Mission Comms, nobody's.
I, I do, yeah, we just have those meetings for the little boy, we're working on, but I don't have any staff report other than that.
Okay, did you have any dates? I know you asked everyone.
We're looking at, does May thirty work for you guys for the second meeting with Lloyd, that's when they would turn in budgets. May thirty, this will be at the apartments, we're looking good.
We could do that, then we could do the, the votes out there too, because if you do them twenty-first, we can compensate.
It'll be a big first, so I guess we could, if you wanted to, do votes and it'll be here all day. We can decide, but if May thirty will work for the second meeting, that's, I think it will go for the second.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, we have one correspondence to the commissioner, this is from Erica Stanley, WSP. Erica Stanley. FEMA.
FEMA?
Okay.
You guys take care.
Thank you. This letter is to notify you, engineering data models, that the Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, is using in the ongoing flood hazard mapping project for the Lower Kansas Custom Watershed, which covers a portion of Osage County, Kansas. Communities in this watershed include Carbonell, Overbrook, and the unincorporated areas of Osage County. As discussed during the Lower Kansas Custom Watershed discovery meetings, which were held virtually on September eighth and fifteenth of twenty twenty-one, about determining where risks may have changed, FEMA's goal is to provide useful, credible data, as well as a fair process to help you make informed decisions, build a safer and stronger community. So this is notifying us of what they're using, there's some links in here, we can provide this to you if you need. Here's the Osage County twenty twenty-three proposed mapping updates. So there is, and I will give this to you Julie, so you can make compensation, you have it already?
I have it, yeah, I think it's just the upper part. I have, Julie should have it, I think, yeah, it's just the upper part, they're talking about the reevaluating.
State of Kansas and Trail Program Coordinator has it, Blood Mapping Coordinator, PDA has it. Project Officer, FEMA has it, that one.
Okay. So everybody that needs it has it. Correct? Correct? Okay. I'm gonna provide this to Julie anyway, my copy, if anybody else needs a copy.
I think they sent me one too, but I don't.
Julie?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I saw the video on it, I think Bailey left it, some video from that, so.
Yeah, I watched. Okay.
We're good.
Think, there it is. That's all correspondence, we'll just need a motion to go to the executive session. Under the following exception, the Kansas of these acts for certain non-elected personnel, with Mr. Bailey, myself, for a matter of, how many minutes? Twenty minutes.
Sorry.
Motion's been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Twenty minutes, not elected.
Correct, so you have to give it my two, they can't leave any, they can't ever talk essentially, but they didn't, you know. Even have, so they, so this, this, they, if I made them talk about something, it's not, so they couldn't be standing for. So there's, it has the things. So, so less than three minutes, as you said, so. Personal matters. Now, like, personal matters, so I think if the law, I can't fully do that. So now, like, the personal matters, attorney, my privilege, so I'm passing where that is. Floyd negotiations, so they, um. What is that again, so, um, this one is real estate acquisition. There's one, two, yeah, so it's always, always, client, or whatever, or about personnel, and he will say it, so. He makes, I'll ask him, is that the only reason time? Who goes in? So I'll make sure, look, there's, sometimes on, I was, I was, does not anyone, Josh, what I said to them all over every time. First one is that he signs personal, so I don't turn on personal, he gets it from them, it's kind of good, it's easy to do. But like, why do you do this? But they're saying, no, so sometimes you see, they're like, that's. But they, they're listening, they will say something, like they're something wrong going on. So they can't, they can't castle it, and they, commissioners, or me, sort of, together, like, well, that, they, they'll do again. But they, like, someone from the public can't come in and say, hey, I don't need your castle. Commissioners, who can, just, you can say something, and they're, they're, um, that can be confusing sometimes, too. How, maybe there was one, so that copy. And like, um, that honestly. Social housing, that, um, our happy, we just, we're happy. Like, right now, I, I kind of, sometimes I do, some specific ten minutes. And technically, you can have a way, if I may, you are in charge of all this, um, it's not, maybe you need to make sure. I mean, I think, I think you kind of are, but I run and do stuff, and no one's really, so it is, I'm in charge of this, but I, it's like, I have to rush on this. And the thing is, do, sometimes we won't want, but it's almost fine, we're working it off.
The thing that we cast it to economic development to you because I am training for new staff and I I can't do that. If you guys want to do it and I take an entry, that's fine, we're not doing it. Because I have to like do secure voting and I'm plugged in other than the fair. So I would like to take it.
It must be submitted by the county or county manager or county.
Yes, so it just be, I just need to enter. It's like an open air project in the fair. So if you guys are going in, I will pick it up and take it.
Can I go ahead and enter it for you?
She right here.
Must be online, I have to enter, but the entry. Online.
So then we have to go to the fair and do it both ways.
Uh huh. You don't have to just tell them you're coming.
Okay, well, yeah, I can call and tell them we're coming and then it was everything's where they, yes, everything's online. It's a pain and I'm so tired of everything online. Works great for everybody but the ending of the person entering. You know, how about a phone call saying, hey, I'm entering. That would take me two seconds. This will take me thirty minutes and then I get time to wear it and I probably have to have a cat's coat. And then I probably have to do something else. If you can, that'd be great.
Okay. If I have trouble calling.
Before when you entered in the fair, when people showed up, that's when I knew. I guess they did. They want to know ahead of time to make their life easier who was gonna enter.
Okay.
So if you wanted to, that's fine. Because yeah, we don't have time to do that with all our other stuff. So I'm glad we're entering and everybody's really excited about next year. But yeah. We, we have to make voting systems run and do what all those were done wrong the last three years before we could do that. Yes, we're, and I'm trying to, we have that budget thing coming up Tuesday, so I believe the law down. I'm gonna ask Heather, she's been with budgets and she'll be like someone like maybe help and see what you have and know, know, because she kinda likes to help. Um, the things, um, cause you're way over there, which makes it hard too. And we're doing it too. And maybe I'll come by sometime, you know, stop by my, wait by yourself or, so you don't feel like you're really by yourself. But I don't know if that one, what I can get you in, I'm taking one from the Department of Revenue. But I'll probably have to drive several hours. I don't really need you in the class now and they might have to deal with more like stuff you're not doing, like the head need budget. So I don't even know if it'll help with that.
Well, let me do that. See, I'm seeing.
We're doing that much tomorrow. Let's see how much that helps us.
Let's do that.
And if we can help each other and we need to get more resources for you, but hopefully you can pull it together with that. Um, and I think the Lloyd group is gonna help a little bit too, since there's a lot of new people. Um, and we're looking at turning them in, meeting thirty. So that's when you turn them in. So up here, we think that made.
I thought you said made something.
Two. Well, we have one up here on my, it's on my calendar this week, that the Lloyd group is planning things.
Yeah, Monday, tomorrow.
Yes, so that was tomorrow or whatever. And then the second meeting is gonna be when you actually turn the budget in. Does it mean you have to talk to them? The commissioners will be here, their accounts will be here. So some people may want to or they have questions, but really you just have to turn it in on thirty. But if you can come in, then they can say, hey, they can say something and you can say, I'm ready. So, and then then it's up to them to take the budget over. So these other next meetings, you don't have to do.
What times are your, are coming?
The first with the pockethead. Um, and we scheduled during staff. Um, and so staff reports are at the end because it makes it harder for people who aren't in the building, but the business should go first or the staff should go at the end, which means whatever lady does with everything else. I would think Jim would be good. Yes. Yes, and keep in mind, how could we go on next two weeks? That girl came here my mom for surgery. Melinda will be here next week and then Erin the week after. So try to work her out. Hopefully it will work harder and I think she's gonna do just fine. Um, and then I will finalize everything when I come back. So she'll take minutes. Melinda, Melinda's my first deputy. She'll decide to do everything. I don't think they'll come from the finalize everything. So it'd be available. But I'll finalize everything, yes, when I come back. Um, it may be. Um, hopefully I won't have to do it. Be a problem. Then we can just have it available for those that need it and then finalize it. I think it will, so. Did make sure, like call, like I need to have a message that everybody calls the offices and try to leave you a message. So remember, don't email me. Try to, the first two weeks, hopefully I'll have an email that comes back and sort them out at the office, but you'll have to talk to one of them three.
Okay.
And they will handle this.
I hope your mom knows.
Thank you. And yes, and we hear that about you too. All right.
It was a requirement.
Well, thank you for the scarecrow stuff and we'll get that scarecrow, we went in budgets just fine here. All right. So she, I have, she's a little senior center. So she's about to start two weeks in pregnant. She's gonna be.
Yeah, well, I miss the little things. She likes.
So, but she's really sweet. She's taken on a lot. She's trying to learn to do, um, grand planning, so she can grant us and she, my most mom was always trying to spend time, which is how she signs. So she has, she has a lot at her office, I think, a lot like mine. Five, so. Who reads this over? So she took this over. And so next year it'll come at us. We'll leave all the challenge, but they're taking a new senior center. And we might do it for next year. You know, and I'll say, but it's. Yes, so she comes to make the prayer table and box. That we can put in there, grow Kansas dirt, and I will have our growing thing. There are really a pot that can look like a rat, which is growing there. And then I was like, oh, do you have some? There are really extremely destructive twenty points.
Little size restrictions.
So as we say, the board can be one that they're beginning to do off, just as hot, like that's the thing. They would eventually, I bet they have lots on whatever, or she, uh. I think she's a good trainer too, but I told her a good trainer. Wow. So again, this is. And her counting must be submitted by your county clerk. Yeah, I helped her. Exactly like her, the county clerk. So this is, I think, is good for, I mean, people will learn about the campaign and everything. So it's like, you just have to, it's like, it's like a, maybe not open. And who's in the fair anymore? Okay, same. Um, just in the fair. So it's just like four age, but if you're, enters open here. So and this is a competition. But we're hoping, you know, if you do something like this, it'll be more personal.
County and then eventually.
And Julie, I gotta go talk to my neighbors and then about how, uh, with like the, like, the.
Right, the ones at the edge.
Oh, so we do like that, how, when it's set this up. Well, the thing is, is if we can plan it early enough, it doesn't have to be full height, form, ability. It just has to be that tall. So. So I, I remember my head over like four weeks, six weeks before the entry opened, you've been done. One minute. How long she's gonna be in the stadium? But yeah, I was like, yeah, um, I don't know, it kind of feels scary for me last year. So she she took it over. That would be great. The scarecrow is a bill just on photos under it, saying Kansas. Guess that's the one.
We want to use, we have to use an office, we need straw. Just stuff is different. So like, because it says, you know, we're going to create, and then it's another level and incorporate the name Kansas Crop, she can have a vehicle in her scarecrow. And then your scarecrow might have to have some.
So the scarecrow can be hollowed out, do you think?
I mean, the scarecrow.
This is, and the line is just this, it's that she's, that the display can be, we need to, or inches tall. It's a third, the seat thirty inches high, I wonder if the whole thing is that tall.
It's, the Kansas is a sunflower and it's gonna be quite tall. It's not gonna look like a sunflower. It's just gonna look like a, it's a, it's.
Well, I wonder if, well, yeah.
Did, was Missy coming back? Melissa, Land Development?
I don't know.
Do you call her?
Yeah.
I'm here.
There you are.
I was calling her phone.
I, I was watching, watching. I was on the, I was finished up.
Okay, I'm gonna move. We go into an executive session, pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter, discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel with Land Development Director Melissa Kraus, Commissioner Bailey, and Commissioner Holm. A matter of ten minutes. Motion has been made, second in all in favor. Aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Ten minutes. Ten minutes. You're about to leave now.
See how I just had to, I feel like, yeah, it's not the right order, but it's everything I need. A lot of times like you were here, I probably would have been helping too. It's also hard to, because I'm sitting here all this time. Two minutes, no. I would love like a tenant right in the middle of the back door. This is touchscreen, my computer is. Well, we need. Yes. So when you know what's in. Well, kills, does a lot. That's what goes on a lot of that stuff, so. Yes, possibly. Scarecrow bleach. It would get to me because I would have been, um, not being counting and then fire got out, it was quite a big fun. To let those houses dry out, we go to the main home, didn't do them.
We completely live in the room.
Like I said, at, at the heart, it's just, it's a garden to give basement to where it's growing lettuce. So I have to. Just waiting for nice and chill to be on the beach. And so.
So in the office, we are very in the house. So we have one in our neighborhood, two blocks up, two blocks in our first room. We own this. And there's some issues with it. We, but we're, it's, it's, it's. First total, we're, we're, we're vacationing for a hundred minutes. It was sort of missing my socks. This is something going on. And we asked, we had some, and then this, the structure, the structure, it's, it's. Cause I'm making, I'm making a kid, it was on my, but yeah, this is where most of the.
So you realize when someone buys their cell phone, I ask them, hello, what is that, should we send it? Is it those, or the questions that? Structure, anything. I don't think that was the last. And I already have. In case, so when someone does something, back itself, it really gets up. Oh, on the ground. When I had one there, they did a falter sound. I mean, it's right there, like it all done up, they're like, see, it's a gauze. I mean, that's crazy. So then did you, um, um, who's an interesting guy, I can't remember who. Did you know that many of them, if I didn't, the government, uh, I think, did you know that's a secret or something? And they're gonna be aware of everything. So, so that guy's talking about this interesting, basically he's talking about another group, it's basically funny. That like wants to supervise the like, how is, well, actually they mean, I don't know. My town is paid for this food, so a lot of our, our, usually paid them each year, right, your brains. You pay them, they're supposed to do everything and people respect them. So, so doing that for each county, they went all the way and other. Um, and let me tell you, the person. And we're past, I don't know, but. In this one, what, what, I don't know. I think it's gonna be. Well, advanced, but you, you have to do much better. And just because something's new, doesn't mean it's better. And there's a lot of technological advances, they're not better. Their toys, people like. So we have a generation who wants it, because it's not good. Well, businesses, museums, teachers, hospitals, our doctors, our banks, and then a lot of the broad, uh, not having customer service. We also just have one person who's down, so we're gonna transition movement. So I agree, and it's nice that we gather what's at home.
Who can come to this meeting? Who would guys drop under this?
No one. Who has one to sit in YouTube at work while people are stealing from the company or working for? Nobody should be watching YouTube at work. You're stealing, but the company is paying. So a lot of things isn't set up for, but double, we, we went to that, we can change society. But a lot of technology then, because it makes people money and people don't realize that the product, if it's free, that means you're the product, because it's not free. And people don't realize that's what's going on. So, um.
I mean, I can see some advantages to it. They need to, you know, go completely digital because then you have people that are losing out from how their kids, you can't store the.
Well, that's why I want everyone to pay money. So we can take those people that have computers, which is ridiculous because of the struggle people have at work, that can't afford them. But we're supposed to have access for other people to have them. But, um, a lot of people can't seem to put two and two together. They think, oh, it's easier. Well, let's talk about where products are made, the cost of production, the cost of fuel, the cost of legal, not all the time, the cost of replacing equipment, the cost of the insurance. I mean, when you book it, whatever the cost, it is not too very easy. It's a fun toy, people like it. When the system goes down, you have nothing. They want to go the way that's wanted. I'm pretty sure eventually it'll go down. They wanna make that choice. Um, because our department deeds is never going, uh, when I was over here. One, that's, that is also part of it, because their deed stolen, put your deed, just like the max of the stuff online, then I'll hack your ceiling. Another reason you don't have one. You're right here, pretty far. And let's see, the, the, the ones that verify, they're sitting there, they're reading that. One minute. But anyway, I can proceed, I have to. And when everything goes down, I won't worry. So the cost of, well, this is never given and no one ever brings that into account. Where are we getting things made? Of the country, it's not even bringing money to our, to our people. So many problems. There's so many creepy goals. I don't see anything. There's, um, there's, but there's seen, there's early, but there's, I remember there's a, there's a pilot, so that's a one where they are, like including. There's a white one, there's a purple one, that's a white one that was made, that is now. That's one of the traditional one, the little letter, I think that's a, that's. Um, hey, my sacred.
It's just a problem, which longer, it's all over the front, like the long, the, I don't know. I don't know, sorry, I want to. And then, like, he, the back yard, I'm trying to see if it's, I can, I can, I'm old house.
I didn't count five for the year, because it was funny because I had a red, blue one and the one separated, color separated. And that interesting one. They're separating, why are they doing that? Oh. And I don't know if they both lived or only one of them, or the, the one.
All right, is that what I can take to the executive session? Okay, all right, almost perfect timing. Let's see, we've got everything. Only five minutes till, who, who called, asked to put this on the agenda? For, for eleven o'clock, the review and approve those six kidding package?
That was. Um, that came from another meeting that said that they were gonna do that.
I think we already did that.
So that's one of those where they said the meeting, we're gonna review that in the next meeting. So they may have done it outside. Um, and so. So, so, so someone called me and said half hour, because I put half hour on there too, so.
They did call you?
They could have called or emailed me, or I wouldn't have put that specific and um, because I got that letter second that said you should, you should always add this on after every meeting. I had like, oh, we already have something on there, but remember that general statement, they said after groundbreaking, we should always have a slot? But I already had that on there, so if at any time they said that during a meeting, I pull it forward and then no one tells me, then I don't know.
Well, that's actually for the public building commission, but it's still, I don't know whether he's got.
And that's what I wanted to talk about too with that, because, you know, that's what I thought exactly when I see the email, is that needs to be on the agenda, yes, but maybe we ought to create at the end of our agenda, a PVC line for the public building commission.
Yes.
And in that way. Or we even have a jury. It, it's just a slot that if we need to put something, anyway, put something in there.
But like, I, I called twice to verify we were in bridge and they were still having that bid and nobody got back to me. So I left it on there. But communication is always great.
Yeah. Well, that's, I was just asking, I didn't know, because here we are, eleven o'clock and no one's here. Uh, I know that we reviewed the package and we approved a package a couple of weeks ago. That was a civil, that was a civil package.
Right, this is the foundation of what the concrete.
Which is the civil.
So for the past eleven, I think whoever's big doesn't show up.
That's what I'm getting at.
Then I think we can go on, because they may have gotten their answer.
Well, we'll see, Jay's got a call into Chris here, let's see if he answers anything.
Okay.
Hang out, give him a few minutes here.
Clean up anything, you have any questions?
Yeah, one for my land and one's just design. I was, I was wondering if he's returning these bids, we did all the bids and took them. I swear there was another one and he said there isn't.
There was five too. Again, I wonder if you guys are done with it. Is he coming?
Uh, Jared? They will review those and then come back with a recommendation. But yes, we'll have to email him, I thought he was gonna leave you a copy of each minute. Do we have anything else for the motion meeting?
Uh. We do not, we did the minutes and everything else is good, we do not.
I like the motion with Jared.
Uh, I'll second that motion, motion to adjournment made, seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
All right, I'd make a motion, we start the public building commission meeting.
We'll second that.
Come on up, gentlemen.
Public, yep, building commission.
So this asphalt base.
Okay, uh. What we would like to do today is go over, um, a couple of things. Um, we did out what we call the foundation package, essentially the asphalt and concrete work. Um, so that's what this first page is, is a summary of that. Um, behind it is more clarifications and assumptions and we could go that if you want, but the same is pretty much the same as we did last time. Um, so the asphalt foundation package came in at a million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Made up of the line items above the total. The bids, you will cover them.
Yeah, so we had, for concrete, we had four, or sorry, we had three bids. Concrete Unlimited came in low at eight thirteen, eight nineteen. Conroy Contractors was nine twenty-six and Goldie came in at nine forty-three. We invited Crookham, Vanco, Roberts, Harbinger. They all declined to bid, their schedules didn't allow, they're looking for fall work and we're trying to get spring, or late spring, early summer work going. Uh, for asphalt, we had three bids, Bettis Asphalt came in one twenty-one, Kilo at one thirty and Sunflower at one forty-three. We included Little Joe's Asphalt, but that was a little too far for them to travel, so they declined to bid on that. So with all that said, we're about roughly ten percent lower than our original budget for those particular scopes.
Trending about the same way we did on the civil, we shaved ten percent of it off and that's a great trend, I mean, we need to keep up that trend. On.
Sorry, so also to include on this, it includes the fencing for the impound lot. And that came in at twelve thousand, nine oh three, and that's one of those that we can push off till later or do it now, I guess.
It'd be good if we just picked it up now, because that's kind of what our, that's what our amendment is based on and it's site work and it'd be good to pick it up now if we can.
Well, that's a point that the tenant's gonna say, everybody's got twelve thousand, nine oh three already.
Yep, it's in there. Um, concrete bids, yeah, uh, we solicited probably eight to ten of them. And people get busy this time of year, so we needed, knew we needed to solicit that many to get the bids that we did. The three that we got, we use them a lot, all three of them. Uh, I worked on one of them for a while. Um, Concrete Unlimited was the low one and they, they got a little aggressive, but that's great, don't see any issue with them. So we're good with them.
And you can see on the clarifications for concrete, uh, everything they've included, and that's per plans and specs. It's a pretty lengthy clarification list.
But it's meant to be.
No.
Provide clarity. Um, so that is an update on the foundation package. The other one, a few pages back, is the overall summary. We are, um, still saying, um, with the two bid packages we got bid out. Uh, we're still saying we're about twenty-two million, seven hundred thousand roughly. But we will trend the same way, we would like to keep bidding this thing out and see what we get and see if we can keep that trend going and get that number knocked down. Um, it's just the course of, you know, what we need to do so we can deal with some actual numbers is our opinion, is to bid this thing out. Bid it out to a lot of people, I'm not trying to catch the bottom of the barrel, but I am trying to get good competitive numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're still two million of them.
Yep.
As of right now.
As of right now, without bidding anything out.
We won't, if trends continue the way we see them, then it should come down, we don't know exactly how much though.
It's significantly coming down as the bids come in.
Yep.
That's two million for the fourth bid you have. So that's not our number at this point.
Well, this already has the concrete in it, so that one's already out of there.
Yeah, the two million, seven hundred thousand roughly, that's got the contracted excavation and demolition, concrete, asphalt and the fence. It's got those included, what it doesn't have included is the budget for the balance of it.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what we really need to bid out.
So they can say, Jennifer's down on twenty-five dollars.
Which is, when you look at the balance, yeah, I'm saying, okay, that's easy math, if I can save ten percent there, that's two million. Yeah, that's starting to get us down to twenty million, seven hundred thousand, I understand that's still over, I'm just projecting some math. And that's why we need to bid it out, really see what we, and deal with reality, so. Okay, um, I have three amendments here, we can, and it's signed by KBS. We can do it the same way, we can send one to your legal, it's the same document, I don't think you'll have any problem with it. And as long as we get an affirmative on that, if you guys want to sign them and email them back to us, scan them in or we'll come get them. We're up on site working, so we can do it either way.
I would do it honestly.
Scan it in and you guys got the affirmation from the legal and you sign it, scan it in, which is fine.
Basically, you approved it. Me and the tenant are saying, okay, you're completely. I think, yeah, you made a motion on it.
This is the other copies, same time.
Yeah, we would like to get approval on that, we did it last time, contingent upon legal approving it. So we'd kind of like to do, did what we did last time to approve it, I guess in a contingent way.
So who looks at all this? We got you guys look at it and.
Goldberg looks at it and I don't think, no, that we sent it.
So the architect's okay with it, Sharon's okay with it?
Yeah, we were happy that it came in ten percent lower than our estimate, so. Which is what we need all the things to do.
You have any questions, gentlemen?
I do have.
You got any questions, Brett?
No.
So do we want to, uh, sign it subject to approval by Tom? So do you want to just sign it?
You can always, yeah.
It's the same document, the only thing you change was the.
I'm fine with approving it as is, we don't see anything here any different, but we did tell our counsel which would send it to you. Maybe you just approve it and send it to you.
So how about we do a motion that we approve, we sign the agreement, that's subject to Tom's approval. Right, I've signed that, so if there's anything that's going on, or could we, do you get with that, Brett?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion, we sign the document, subject to the approval of Tom. I can't remember his last name now. Stumble Hanson's in there. Tom Stumble Hanson.
Liam?
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye. You want us to send that document to him? I think we did last time when we just copied.
Yeah, because that would probably get back to you quicker.
Okay.
That's what many copies need.
This is good enough for me if we just got the one copy and if everybody's okay with a scam, then.
Yeah, because Tom has a copy, so I'll mail it to him, so.
Okay, we'll take care of it, we'll send this to him and then we'll copy everybody on it that needs to be. Um, and should be, any problem, I'll put it.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, the other one was the tax exemption certificate.
Got it right here.
All right, appreciate that, and it's a project specific one?
Yes, this is request for project exemption certificate, and it has the type of project, present use, proposed use, project location, all that good jazz.
Okay, as long as it's projects.
Here, why don't you look it over and just double check it?
Project specific, that's.
You might have a few extra pages there.
We're gonna change the way we meet with you guys.
Okay.
Because right now you have it scheduled once in a while for eleven o'clock after a commission bid, you have no idea whether you're coming or not.
Okay.
So we're gonna, the public building commission will meet with you guys and be totally separate from the county commissioners, even though it's probably the same people, a lot of the same people. So we'll have a little more flexibility to have those meetings.
We're very flexible, we can have them, so whenever you want to.
Well, like today, at ten thirty, we would have them, but.
Yeah.
You have to run around at eleven, and we didn't, but he's going to rob.
He let me know we did it earlier.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I tried to call you twice and send you the message.
Yeah, it's been a busy day.
But anyway, we could set it up or we can do this meeting in an evening if we need to. It doesn't have to be here, I mean, we can, as needed, but I mean, right now, we know we have to have some meetings pretty consistent to get things rolling, but at some point, I lose, we get caught up, so.
Right.
I don't have a problem doing it this way, it's just when we do, we need to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm good with it too, I mean, we've had a hard time at eleven, which we did this time and we're, like I say, we were out there fifteen minutes early, but we're just talking football, so. Yeah, we can keep.
Because there's gonna be something, we won't have a meeting on Monday.
Oh.
If there's a hall, there's something, so it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna be communication.
We can give you a week's notice of when we need to come.
That won't, because if you call me, I've got his email, I've got his email, I've got hers, I can give it to everybody, I can tell everybody else that needs it.
I've been trying to coordinate Thursday, it's taken calls when we're not here.
That works better, we did, I mean, just so we know.
I had it for me like, I had to call her Friday, or even Friday, saying that we would definitely be here Thursday.
Well, Thursday, Friday, that's what we need to know, yes, it's not my fault, probably.
So when are you coming back again?
Uh, we're getting the rest of the bids in April.
May tenth.
Or May tenth, yeah, April tenth, a little bit late.
So you're, we might be your top extra, one of your top.
So we're getting the rest.
So we won't see you again until the fifteenth?
Right, that's that following Monday, yeah, you can almost say now, we will be here at eleven o'clock on the fifteenth. Uh, and go over the rest of the bids and we may need a little longer on that one, I mean, if we could schedule an hour, I don't think we'll take that.
Just a lot more scopes of work together.
So, and I can send that email and request that from Cherf Wells and Julie, you can just say, hey, we'd like to be on there for eleven o'clock on the fifteenth of May.
You are gonna need to keep in mind, um, the next two weeks, I have family surgery, I won't be here, I'll emails, I'll have to go to someone else in my office.
Could you send yours to forward to send that?
Well, Melinda or someone else can get it. So they'll have to be in charge of collecting everything and people aren't gonna just send my email, they're gonna get a message and they're gonna have to call and talk to someone, not just send an email, they get it taken care of.
Okay, so you can't just forward your email on to whoever said, you're standing in your position?
It will be everybody in my office, so they will have to pick up a phone and call, they will not be able to email.
That's what I'm saying, if you have, if you have a, all you can do is forward your emails for that two weeks on to say her. That way someone's watching your email, your inbox.
Well, it's not that easy, it'd be better if they have a message, not to leave it and call so that they can get the right person and get a team. Rather than my, or someone else's email, because I get like fifty a day and you don't know what they're for and they're not very descriptive and you do so.
Anything here, Jim, just for the.
When are you leaving, Jim?
Um.
So you're in the list of the first and the eighth meeting?
Yes.
So you're gone the week of the eighth, or you're back the week of the eighth?
I'm gone.
So but you'll be here for the fifteenth on that meeting?
Yes, and I have, that's a real busy, I have a bunch of reports due in the next two weeks, I actually have clerks something to do, so I'll be here, but I have a full plate that two weeks.
This exemption certificate is starting to look right, because it's saying project completion. Um, you could just get this in the last day or two?
She said it to me.
Okay, so it looks right, I'm not an expert on them, can I have a copy of it and just so I can?
Yeah, I gotta fill it out yet, submit it.
It has to go to the state, you can't just fill it out, the state has to approve or deny it to get that type of thing.
It looks like the right one to me, because I'm seeing.
Yeah, I thought you just wanted this, our tax ID number.
Okay.
That's the, that document we sent you previously, it wasn't the right one?
No, it, because it's really, doesn't allow us, I mean, it's kind of a county one, as I understand it.
Yeah.
And I'm not the county, so I can't purchase things on behalf of the county, because I'm not a county person.
Right.
That's why we asked for a project specific one, and it's, it's just what I've been using for, it's the only one I've ever got for twenty-eight years, it just has to be project specific, so. But it looks like this is getting it, so.
Well, that second page you held up, that's what would have to be filled out when the project is done and closed it. That's that shorter one is the original, that's the end of the project, yeah.
Yeah, I recognize that one, so that's why I'm saying, it looks like the right certificate, because I recognize this, so. Do I need to do any more with this?
If you want to finish filling it out, I'm surprised it all did, doesn't really matter to me, because I'm a little unclear, I guess, on what you're looking for. Do you, can you forward me one of those, maybe blank out some sensitive information?
No, there's not sensitive, yeah, I'll send you one.
Just send me what it looks like, let's get you clarified, because I want to make sure you get the right.
I'll take this if you don't mind, I'll send you one and between them and I, we'll get it worked out.
Yep.
That work?
Yep, that could be perfect.
Appreciate that. Okay, uh, the hazmat survey, I'll just update you on that, I think we had samples taken a week ago or something like that. They usually take two weeks to do them, so I think that's gonna fall in line where we can start demoing that conference room off here in maybe three weeks. So that's not holding us up, that's tracking, so. With that, that's all the updates I've got.
The building permit should be done today, by three thirty. So hopefully we'll be digging dirt by four o'clock.
So when did you say you're doing the next bid, the fifteenth? You talked about your next bid.
We're taking bids May tenth.
We need to get the agenda for the fifteenth.
You don't hurry up, the city's gonna beat you, they're moving, moving, I'm keeping the count.
Oh, is it?
Oh, Fast Track, Roger.
I was watching them, they get after it.
Well, that's, actually, the dirt company, they're called Fast Track, their parent company, Concrete Limited, and you know this. So it's a good thing, because it helps communication within the company and I'm like, well, you did too, you know, you did talk to each other, it's not my fault.
Right, right, you got no excuse.
I've had several levels that worked there too.
That is good, so, uh, the solicitations, I think they're. Uh, the solicitations, I think they're all out, I think we're soliciting to everybody who should be, so I think we're tracking, appreciate it, so. You're good, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, here we go.
Yeah, again. All right, members of the jury.
Kind of believe you're in the public building commission.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all of those in the same time? We are adjourned.
Appreciate it.
Brad, Brad.
Captain.
So.
Thank you guys. You guys have a minute to turn on?
We're, we're. You could move to adjourn before we went in the PVC.
I'm sorry. It's his fault.
No.
Nope.
Right back next week.
Yeah.
Make sure, see if you can fill that, and try to make sure it's on the bottom, you can sign. And. I will be on, and, uh, that way it's on there. So I'm going to try to post the agenda that.
Always do.
So I'll put you on the next agenda for ten. We need to have section two. Is that how it's changing? Because then I want to first, first.
Thank you. See you, guys.
That says whatever's at the top, it's up, status here.
Christopher, what are you doing today?